Good evening. I'd like to call the December thirteenth meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Escobal? Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Labor? Mr. Labor is present. Dr. Rennie?
Present.
Mr. Royble?
Present.
Mr. Seagrave?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
Dr. Aldridge?
Present.
Mayor Collins?
I'm present.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
One member is absent there. We do have a call.
Great. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item is number four.
Before we start today, I think I need to explain what I'm wearing today. I sit before you, a very proud Bronco fan, and we hired a new chief of police from Kansas City. And he loves Wyoming, loves everything about it, but he couldn't give up his allegiance to his football team. Unfortunately, they beat the Broncos, and so I am relegated to wearing this red thing today. And so maybe in the next game we play in a couple of weeks, he'll be wearing a Bronco jersey. Madam Clerk.
Next item, number four, consent agenda. All items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agendas.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone on the governing body that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So move second.
It's been moved by Dr. Aldridge, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda is approved.
Next item is number six, ordinance on third reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located northeast of the intersection of Old Happy Jack Road and Westland Road.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this annexation? Hearing none, Dr. Rennie?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation Public Service Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook. Comments from members of this governing body. Mr. Seagrave? Okay. Comments? Hearing none, all those, oh, we have a roll call, please.
We have Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Labor?
Yes.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. This annexation is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number seven, ordinance on third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from County LI Light Industrial to LI Light Industrial for land located northeast of the intersection of Old Happy Jack Road and Westland Road.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this zone change? Hearing none, Dr. Rennie?
Mayor, the Public Service Committee heard this item, and the recommendation is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Labor?
This certainly is something that we've been working on for quite a while, and these two actions together really freed up and improved a area that was severely blighted. There was a shack on this particular parcel and a nearby property that needed to be dealt with. Very importantly, I think, we need to remember that part of all the transactions that transpired here and the dealings that we have with those property owners gave us chance to straighten out those lot lines that were down in Crow Creek and thereby acquire that floodway of the creek for our purposes. And this is an area that is going to be it's immediately across the creek from the new Cowboy Dodge that's under construction there. And it is where we're going to be working on the Army Corps of Engineer plan to reclaim the creek, and this also has some real significant importance to the development of the Greenway path in the final section of the thirty-year-old master plan that brings that path from Martin Luther King Park to the missile drive gate of Warren Air Force Base. So these two actions, although they might not appear to be that important, truly are the result of several years and some serious efforts that we took to improve that whole area and make some of our long-term plans come true. So I'm very pleased we're adopting this tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else in the governing body like to speak to the zone change? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Labor?
Yes.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Or Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Dr. Aldridge?
Yes.
The zone change is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number eight, ordinance on third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from HR, high-density residential, to CB, community business for land located southeast of and adjacent to the intersection of Western Hills Boulevard and Osage Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, I need to declare a conflict of business relationship with the Apple.
Mr. Seagrave will declare a conflict. How about from the audience? Is anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Hearing none, Dr. Rennie?
And, Mr. Mayor, the Public Service Committee met on this item also. Their recommendation is to give and approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Aldridge?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Labor?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave? I'm sorry.
Confirmed.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Thank you.
The zone change is approved on third and final reading with Mr. Seagrave declaring a conflict of interest.
Next item is number nine, ordinance on first reading, amending the Unified Development Code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming to create the definitions functional turf and non-functional turf and amending various sections of Article six.
We'll refer this to the Public Services Committee.
Next item is number ten, ordinance on first reading, pursuant to Section 2.2.2 Plan Development Regulating Plan or Development Master Plan, Section 5.1.3 Official Zoning Map, and Section 5.6.2 PUD Plan Unit Development District of the Unified Development Code. Ornance, amending ordinance number forty-two thirty-two by modifying certain standards of the adopted district Plan Unit Development PUD for a portion of Sections eight and nine and all of the west half section of fourteen, a portion of the east half, east half of Section seventeen, and all of Sections fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-one, township thirteen North Range sixty-six West of the six PM, Laramie County, Wyoming, located to the southeast of the intersection of East College Drive and Avenue C.
We'll assign this one to the Public Services Committee.
Number eleven, ordinance on third reading, or first reading, amending ordinance number forty-three ninety-six, defining the terms and conditions of employment for sworn officers of the city of Cheyenne Police Department for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
We'll refer this to the Finance Committee.
And next item is going to be number thirteen, resolution authorizing submission of a federal emergency management contingency preparedness grant application under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program on behalf of the governing body of the city of Cheyenne for the purpose of purchasing new vehicle exhaust systems for existing fire station infrastructure.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Mr. Royble?
Mr. Mayor, at the request of staff, and due to the ineligibility of funding for this type of equipment under the regional grant, this item died due to lack of a motion, therefore, there is no recommendation on this item.
Okay, this item dies for a lack of a motion. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Next item is going to be number fifteen, resolution designated.
Excuse me, we have a point of order.
Died for lack of motion, committee, but that's for regulation.
No one made an emotion.
You didn't ask, did you ask for much?
Would you like to make a motion, sir?
No, but I just, I think I couldn't hear you ask.
I did ask, Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Royble, if he had a motion. There was no motion. No one else stepped up, so I did move on to the next item. But if there's somebody who'd like to make a motion, I'd be pleased to take it.
I don't think anyone does.
Next item, please.
Number fifteen, resolution designating allocation of Wyoming Lotto revenues to the city of Cheyenne to be distributed to community recreation and events for the purpose of construction remediation and completion of quality of life projects in the city of Cheyenne for a five-year period.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Royble?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Royble?
I move to amend by substitute date December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, which includes the striking, which includes striking out the eighth whereas clause, which reads, following the first quarterly receipt of Wyoming Lotto revenues to the city in twenty-twenty-two and replacing it with July first, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. We'll go to the audience to talk about the amendment. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the amendment? How about from the governing body? Mr. Johnson?
Okay, the reason this came forward strictly due to budgetary reasons that I was asked by the city treasurer because the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two had already been budgeted for these revenues. So to give a clean slate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, it was asked if we could push that date back to July first. And so that was the reason for the proposed substitute.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the governing body? We're on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
I see the hands and the nose. Mr. Seagrave, Mr. Labor, and Dr. Aldridge are nose. The amendment passes. We're on the main motion. Comments from the governing body on the main motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave?
It's hard to talk through this mess, but, you know, this has been an interesting year for all of us. We started in January with a goal-setting session, and the, one of the main priorities was to find additional general fund revenues. We did that. Not sure everybody in the community loved that, but we did that. And now here we are, less than a year later, turning around and withdrawing funds from the general fund revenue. It makes no sense to me. I read the article in the paper that supports this, and it's because Colorado does this, so maybe we need to do this. I love parks. I have two resolutions coming using overage funds rather than taking general funds away. So based on all of that, based upon our goals for the year, I cannot support this, and we just received a memo from you today, sir, talking about fire department issues. This is a terrible time to take money from the general fund. So I'll be of a no vote. Thank you.
Do you have any person in the governing body like to speak? Dr. Aldridge?
Well, Mayor Collins, through you to my colleagues, and I wanted to just say that I also support parks and recreation and public events. I think that they serve an important role in our community and that Teresa and Jason and their staff do an amazing job. And so I would hope that it would be understood that this is not, for lack of support of that department. I have some concerns about placing these revenues towards that, that one department out of the general fund where they would normally go, simply because we don't know what all of the expenses we're going to be facing are going to be with having to not only handle some overages in payroll but from the fire department with overtime, but also trying to restore the pension, trying to accommodate employee raises, restoring some of the positions that have been lost. And I just really feel like this is not the appropriate time to attempt to do this. But if we can find other ways to, and other funds that are one-time monies to use, I would be more than willing to support that. But at this time, I will also be a no vote.
All right, is there anyone else in the governing body like to speak? Mr. Cook?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and if I may, through you ask the question either to the city attorney or attorney, excuse me, treasurer, if I may.
Please ask your question. We'll get an answer.
Treasurer, I just, I wanted to, to be clear on the, on the effect of your amendment that you, that you requested and that we passed. I believe, I believe that was done in conjunction with what you, that my colleague stated. My understanding of that, of that amendment, Adam Treasurer, is that this collection would not be devoted to CRE until July first of twenty-twenty-two. Is that, is that what I heard? Is that what I'm to assume?
Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Mayor, through you, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
July first.
Of twenty-twenty-two.
Right, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. So when I, we start preparing this next budget, that will be, those revenues will be earmarked then.
I just, I wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any more follow-up, Mr. Cook? Anyone else in the governing body like to speak? Mr. Johnson?
The reason I brought this forward, and it seems like it was a long time ago that I actually wrote this, was because of, I wrote this the week after the six penny election. So I was able to actually cross off the Depot Plaza because that was covered under the, the six penny that passed for downtown remediation. So that was part of the concern that Parks and Rec had always brought up to us in regards to remediation that needed to take place. The Greenway also passed, so I could literally mark that off my list as an item that would have required additional funding. This is basically set up for the items that we do not have the funding for. Since I've been on here, even though I took a vacation since twenty-fifteen, whether they be Parks and Rec or community events and recreation, every time that they have a project, it's, they just seem to always be the ones that get cut. They take the most cuts when during the COVID layoffs, they take, you know, their projects are always like, because everybody focuses so much on, you know, well, we need to focus on the roads, we need to focus on this. And so their priorities are always, seems to be, historically, since I've been here since twenty-fifteen, historically have always been the last items that are funded. And then the thing that comes with it is you can always talk about fifth and sixth penny overages. Those come with so many ties to them in regards to how you're actually supposed to use those for infrastructure. We already know that eighty percent goes to infrastructure, twenty percent goes to the United Way is what we discussed a couple of meetings ago. Six penny, obviously, the language is written specifically for the voters to vote on, and so we shouldn't be dipping into overages for those funds to pay for other projects that haven't been done by the voters. Insult me all you want that I actually look to other states for things that have succeeded. If, if you read my article in the newspaper, Great Outdoors Colorado has almost put, you know, I think it was like thirteen billion dollars into Colorado infrastructure. That's where my idea came from. I actually went to Colorado, visited several skate parks, always looked at the sponsor boards, and saw Great Outdoors Colorado was one of the consistent sponsors to actually make these quality of life issues happen. I read the state statute, saw nothing in here that prohibited me from actually allocating funding to this type of project. As I stated, or even in my own history, I know that I had to, was told by the former city treasurer, I had to wait for a garbage truck not to catch on fire in order to actually pay for a fence to be done, which was only twenty-seven thousand dollars. I also got called out on the radio, several interviews in regards to somebody that took a shotgun and shot up a slide in Lincoln Park and asking me when I was going to take care of that. I had to wait till the next fiscal year to actually remediate a slide, something I thought we would have had, you know, the supporting actions on the governing body to allocate those funds, and I had to wait till the next fiscal year. I've also had a report of a bathroom. I've also had a report of a bathroom at Cahill Park that I had to wait. We shut down the bathroom for three months, waiting for revenues to actually come forward to fix a toilet. These are the types of things that Parks and Rec, Community Resorts Recreation, come to us on nearly every meeting, asking us, can you please find us revenues to do this? So yes, I did use the Great Outdoors Colorado model. I went to state statute, looked at how this was formulated, to actually improve on things like tungsten basketball hoops, a tennis court net that might be replaced. I had several people come up after I mentioned pickleball because that's a growing sport in our community. Frisbee golf, all kinds of things that literally we could actually improve on our current infrastructure without always working on, focusing on build, 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 and new, new, new. It was, this was one of those things that Parks and Rec could actually apply for grants, get these revenues to actually fix a lot of our projects in our decaying infrastructure is what was stated in one of our work sessions when it was talked about just dilapidated playgrounds along the Greenway. That's what this could be used for. This is my resolution stated, this was not supposed to be used for loss of revenue, wages, or overtime. This basically was to show that we cared enough about our infrastructure of our parks. And as my colleague from Ward Two has stated privately to me that when it comes down to it, we can talk about all these data centers coming into the community, and we don't have enough time to support, you know, getting the building permits and everything out there. But when these people actually come to live, our parks are completely dilapidated. And that's what makes people actually want to relocate here. That's one of the things that they look for is our quality of life. And he has stated many times, you know, that people don't come to Cheyenne because we have nice roads. They want a good infrastructure and a park system to show that we're actually worth living. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie?
I'm going to support the resolution. Having been here for a while and been through two or three rifts and, and cutbacks at various times, when we have to, when we have to make cuts to the budget generally, I mean, we look to, to keep services where sanitation, police, fire, roads, those are kind of essentials that we have to do, and parks and rec, and our parks always get, always seem to take the biggest hit during, during those times. And yet, it's our parks and our amenities that get people to move here and get them to stay here. And I've argued for years that that's probably the biggest thing we can do to help ourselves is to keep, keeping to increased quality of life. So I think that in some respects, if we can guarantee to Parks and Rec that they have these monies and they can fix some of the projects or deal with some of the instances, as my colleague from Ward Three discussed. One, it may reduce some of their demands to the general fund budget, so I think we should support it. Secondly, I mean, we have used the general fund for things. I mean, we spent monies out of, I believe, the general fund to finish the Seventeenth Street Lighting Project when we knew that there could be monies that would, could come from the six penny out of that. Also, with the successful passage, passage of the six penny, we freed up four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that had been dedicated to the, to the minimum revenue guarantee for the airport. So I think there are ways we can, can fund, that we can manage this in a general fund, and so I will support it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave?
I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. No one has talked about replacing the revenue that will be lost. Again, this was a primary issue for us this year in our goal-setting session. We worked very hard to add additional funds. Now, again, less than a year, we're turning around and taking them away. I, I completely support parks. As I indicated, I have two resolutions coming shortly. I do not believe it was the general fund that was used for the Seventeenth Street Lighting. I believe that was old annexation funds that had been set aside. So I mean, if there's, if there's ways to help parks through overage funds, I want to do it. Absolutely, I want to do it. But to take it out of the general fund at this point, knowing that we have substantial raises, fire obligations coming that will come directly out of the general fund, I just don't think this is the right time for this type of effort. Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the governing body like to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Labor?
Well, I'm particularly concerned about this matter because of recent events. Over the past two years, two and a half, three years, we've seen something happen that we never dreamed of, that we never imagined, that had never happened in our city. And as a result, we had to make some really serious budget cuts that affected a lot of departments, no doubt, Parks and Rec. But the rationale here that because they do it in Colorado, and of course, I do recall when they initiated their Lotto, and I'm aware of all the wonderful things that have happened in their status as a result of that, its applicability here is completely different. If we start earmarking like this, what's next? Shall we earmark gas tax money? Shall we earmark a portion of the property tax? Shall we, and I'm not sure that there aren't some considerations, legal considerations here that I might not be speaking to exactly, but the point is, the flexibility necessary to manage our city during extremely difficult times and certainly possible disasters, natural occurrences enter into that. We've had that happen before. We have the ability to fund the employees out of our general fund, and I know that they need help. And I certainly want to compliment the Parks folks. Our parks look great this year. I noticed a lot of people really enjoying the new playgrounds in Lions Park. We are not in a situation where our parks are in such dire condition that has been represented here tonight. We have a great staff. I certainly want to help them, but earmarking of this nature shouldn't even be considered because we have so many responsibilities we have to fulfill. And I've heard mention here tonight about the six penny. Of course, those funds are very specifically and tightly directed to those voter-approved items. Those grants we get from the state of Wyoming and the federal government have a lot of strings attached to them that make that direct purpose so important. So it's not like we don't have plenty of examples of issues that we have, and certainly that includes six penny money that is going to go to the Parks Department. So I think these arguments are, I think premature might be one word. How can we forget what just happened to us? How can we forget? How can we forget the kind of cuts and real difficult choices we had to make because of a totally unexpected pandemic and its effect on our economy, our city? So the more flexibility you have in the general fund, the more important it is. And again, this sets an incredibly poor precedent. What is next to be earmarked? You're, I'm unaware of any earmarking of this nature that has happened up to this point. Can someone give me an example of any such earmarking that has occurred in the past?
Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I mean, what, what about, pardon me, Mr. Mayor, what about the efforts to earmark the, the monies from the wind farm for, to pay back BOPU and to replace money at, at Community Recreation Events then? That's a great example.
Well.
Mr. Labor.
My answer to that would be, that was part of a contractual agreement that we had, and that was definitely not earmarking. This is a completely different process. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess we can discuss semantics here. But I'll ask again. Has a resolution of this nature ever come before this body again before?
Mr. Mayor, just to quick, my thought, what about sanitation? We've earmarked all the money from sanitation to sanitation, whereas it used to be a portion that came into general fund.
Well, of course, when we look at budgeting and those type of relationships, but I would say in this case, you're talking about ordinance. You're not talking about resolution. I don't believe that I've seen this, and I don't think this is a step that we should take. It is, uh, one more time. We don't know what's coming down the road. So the more flexibility and ability we have to maximize the uses in our general fund is a good thing. And furthermore, I don't believe that our excellent Parks Department is suffering to the degree that we need to start this. And in my opinion, this is clearly earmarking and something we shouldn't be doing. Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the governing body like to speak to this resolution?
Yes, sir, when you're ready.
Mr. Johnson?
Like, the one thing is, is we're not going to have really too many more Menard stories in Cheyenne's history to allocate those funds, and just looking at what the Menards money did for Community Events and Recreation, and just with the Aquatic Center alone, shows exactly what this resolution can do strictly from that. And then when we list, I mean, in my mindset, when I did this, I look at our overall budget of fifty four million dollars, and even just annually this year, this is three hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. Like Dr. Rennie brought up, when the resolution, or excuse me, the, it passed for the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the minimum rate guarantee, that freed up that money. There was the two percent increase that came into the city from the BOPU that went into effect on July 1st. And the last I checked, we're currently at a hundred, about a hundred and fifty-two days in reserves right now for governmental operations. So I guess my main concern is if, you know, what are, for the next year in our goal session, I'm going to bring this up if this fails, that how did three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars literally bankrupt a city and took, what was accused of taking it, when I only did was reallocate it to one of our own entities? I didn't steal anything and put it over here. I did my resolution and said, these guys have continually come to me for help since 2015. And I literally thought outside the box to literally alleviate some of their concerns, because they are the ones get, you know, hit up the most for, you know, not saying compliance and other entities don't get hit up in the city for problems that are going on, but they still do get, you know, complaints about, you know, playgrounds and things that are in disarray. I mean, if I ask for it, I'm sure that Teresa and Jason would supply me a list of complaints that they received just in 2021 that I could have alleviated with a lot of these funds, but we just couldn't take on, because we didn't have any matching grant funds or anything else to actually alleviate our problem. That's why I came up with this. This is outside the box. You're absolutely right. This has not been done before. That's why I was elected to do it, because I don't think that way. I think outside the box. I analyze problems in a different way. I mean, if this fails for a tight night, so be it. But you know what? I tried to actually make something that was productive for my city, and I am a quality of life candidate, and I literally wrote my article for the Tribune Eagle, strictly to let the voters know exactly what I was doing. And from the response I got when I went out to public events, they were very, very supportive of this. I didn't have one negative aspect in regards to this resolution. They actually thought it was brilliant, because I used the existing model that had had success to bring it forward to Cheyenne.
Thank you. Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. I, you know, I, I've heard both arguments, or all the arguments on this, and I guess one of, maybe this is, and my colleague from Ward One used the word premature, maybe this is premature. We're getting ready to go into goal-setting. We're getting ready to do negotiations. We've got some items that we're working on to try and restore longevity pay. We're working on trying to get raises for our employees, which is, you know, with benefits and things, is going to be, you know, right now it's an estimated amount, but it's going to be substantial to try and take people back and make them whole to what they were prior to the cuts that were necessary to be done. I also wonder sometimes if we don't, aren't just doing a shell game, quite honestly, where we raise funds through BLPU to put into our general fund so we can balance our budget. And then we turn around and earmark funds to go to quality of life issues that maybe those same individuals would not have been in favor of had they known that we were going to collect money on one hand, the BLPU on a fee, and turn around and put it back into parks that were, that wasn't on the six penny sales tax ballot, so I just, maybe it's just premature, and maybe a better option would be to delay this until after we see where we're actually going to be financially.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
By postponing it till July 1st, we have delayed it until we can see where we're going to be financially. Our budget has to be finished prior to, prior to July 1st. So we will know, and if it's really, if as the councilman from Ward Three somewhat sarcastically said, if this money's going to break the city, we'll know by before July 1st, and we can always rescind this resolution.
Dr. Aldridge.
I appreciate Dr. Rennie's idea that things can be rescinded, but I think we all understand that rescinding something is much more difficult than simply just waiting to see where we're going to be at financially.
Do you want to respond, Dr. Rennie? All right, that a good debate. Anyone else want to speak? Mr. Labor.
I have a question for the city treasurer.
Ask it through, and I'll ask, I'll get it for you.
So, um, my question is, we have a general fund budget, and we have other fiscal responsibilities in our budget of enterprise accounts, six penny, sales tax money. What is the total figure of our city budget this year?
Um, and Mr. Mayor, through you.
Please.
Can I look that up for you? I believe it's about fifty-three, fifty-four million, but do you want an exact number?
Is that with all, all of our enterprise funds and everything?
Total.
Let me look that up.
Fingers don't fail me now.
Mr. Mayor, through you, one hundred and fifty-two million, nine eighty-three, seven sixty-four.
And how much do we have in the general fund?
Mr. Mayor, we have fifty-five million, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So, am I correct, hearing you correctly, that two-thirds of our existing budget is already dedicated and not available in the, for that broad use that the general fund is? Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I think that's really the heart of the matter here. Two-thirds of our budget is already walked down. And rightly so. I don't have any argument with that. I think that that's very appropriate in a lot of reasons. But then when we look at that one-third in the general fund that seems to be confused quite often with our budget, it's not our budget, it's the general fund. That general fund should be protected. This, and, and being an old, having been around a long time, I think we've had improvements like the enterprise account for sanitation, so we couldn't raid it anymore. There are safeguards in our system. But when we don't know what's coming at us, and we start earmarking as we've never done before, and I believe has been acknowledged here tonight, that's a dangerous path to go down and unnecessary. We can get into our budgeting process. We're going to be looking at some real opportunities here next month and the next few months for some funds that, that can be broadly spread, and that can balance our opportunity to do that kind of addition and subtraction. But the idea that the Parks Department is that deficient, I, I don't believe that's correct, and, and I think I've made my point here. We need that flexibility in the general fund, because that's where we have the flexibility. We don't have it in the other two-thirds of our budget. Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, would you let the council know where the money for the minimum revenue to guarantee comes from? What, what budget does it come from?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, it comes through the general fund.
Is it through reserves, or is it actually budgeted in our general fund?
Uh, last year it was budgeted through reserves. I believe the last two years it was budgeted through reserves.
From reserves, so it's not really, the six penny is not going to help our general fund.
Well, it'll help the general fund.
Reserves, yes, ma'am. Okay, just making sure I understood. Thank you. All right, we've had good discussion. Is there anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I see the hands of the nose. Dr. Aldridge, Mr. Labor, and Mr. Seigre, the resolution is adopted. On next item, please.
Next item is number thirty-one A, voucher report.
We're on the voucher reports? All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the voucher report? About from the governing body? All right, hearing the next item, please.
Thirty-one B, announcement that due to the Christmas holiday schedule, the regularly scheduled city council meeting on Monday, December 27th, 2021, will instead be held on Tuesday, December 28th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at Story Gym, Laramie County Schools District Number One Boardroom, 2811 House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting. Notice of emergency procurement. In accordance with the city of Cheyenne purchasing policy, an emergency procurement has been authorized by Mayor Collins for the emergency municipal building HVAC deck ceiling. The emergency deck ceiling has been authorized to Mighty Ducks for seventy-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Other business.
So anyone in the audience like to speak to other business? Before we go to the council, I have one item that I'd like to let you know about, and that is, there was a young lady named Elsie Suzanne Maggard, born today, twelve forty-five, nine pounds, four point five ounces, two parents, Deacon and Stephanie Maggard, grandparents Philip Maggard and Lisa Simmons, and grandparents, councilman Ken Escobell and his wife Suzie. So that's a good day today. How about governing body, any other business?
Sir, when you're ready.
Mr. Johnson?
Michelle, are you going to speak about this weekend? Okay, they'll cover it all. So, two events this weekend. Ward Three is once again doing our coffee and council at Dasbog on Pershing, next to North Platte Physical Therapy and everything over in that plaza. That's from nine to eleven AM, so by all means, come over and join us for that. And then after that, I leave to head to the depot to represent my, as liaison to the Historic Preservation Board. We're still selling fountain ornaments to benefit the airport fountain, as you saw on consent tonight. We did approve the contract for the Terracotta Warriors, so we're continuing on funding for that fountain. So by all means, come to coffee and council as well as the depot.
All right, is there anyone else want to speak under other business?
Mr. Mayor.
If anyone else has any other business. President White.
Pursuant to Wyoming State Statute, Section sixteen dash four dash four oh five, Section A, subsection three, and sixteen dash four dash four oh five, Section A, subsection seven, I move that the governing body meet in executive session to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
Is that Mr. Rubble? Seconded by Mr. Rubble. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So we will enter into executive session. Just for the audience, I, information, we have a potential litigation and some labor issues that we want to talk about. And so we're going to executive session. When we come out of executive session, we're going to adjourn, there will be no further business done today. And so with that, Michael, if you would turn off the, the media, and those folks that don't need to be here for the executive session can go home, and we'll get this business done.